We gather all the present.
Education, probably the human likeness in our education.
Ms. Park. God in heaven, Lord, we thank you for the day and the blessings and the opportunity to get together and discuss the business of our little town. We ask that you would lead God and direct our thoughts as we do this, be in everything that we do and help us to be stronger servants for your, these things, for asking your name. Amen.
Amen. My pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You should have or have seen a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. I'm in motion.
I make the motion.
Motion by Vicki.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we have the second reading of the ordinance.
Can we decide this was oh, one, twenty five? Okay. This is going to be oh, one, twenty twenty five, an ordinance authorizing the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by KRS chapter one eighty six on highways and streets in the city of McKee and establishing restrictions for operation, whereas the Kentucky General Assembly passed Senate bill sixty three to authorize local governments to adopt ordinances to allow street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by KRS chapter one eighty six to operate on highways within its jurisdiction, whereas Senate bill sixty three contains equipment requirements for restrictions for and for streets operations of street legal special purpose vehicles on highways, including those in local governments that allow operation by ordinance, whereas the city of McKee determines that the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on authorized highways is beneficial to the city and its residents, whereas the city of McKee reserves its rights to impose additional restrictions on the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles. Now therefore, will be ordained by the council for the city of McKee as follows. Section A lists all the definitions from the statute. Section B is authorized use effective June twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Street legal special purpose vehicles is defined by Senate bill sixty three and qualified in KRS chapter one eighty six shall be authorized to operate on highways within the city of McKee. Operation of street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by Senate bill sixty three, qualified in KRS chapter one eighty six shall be subject to state law requirements and restrictions. If any part of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or unenforceable, the remaining part shall away in force in effect. This ordinance is ready to present to the city council for the first reading on June twenty, the last meeting and then the second reading of today. And I know that the sheriff's department has put out, like, so I put it out in our last write-up of the meeting and the sheriff's department has put out a bunch of stuff about the requirements that the vehicles have to have and they have to be registered and they have to carry insurance. So like, it has all of those things in the statute.
Okay, we ready for a motion?
I make that motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll say it.
Second by Dillon. Is there any question, Dillon? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have other ordinances that need to be read?
I have two resolutions, just whenever you want me to do this.
Okay, do you want me to give yours?
Okay, both of them. And I gave you all copies of the resolution. The first one is this exhibit four and the other one is going to be this authorizing resolution to McKee. And they're both kind of basically the same resolution, but one, our engineers needed us to pass and the other one is in the grant agreement. This is for the Kentucky Water Grant and it's going to be the project. It's, we've got one point seven million dollars to replace the creek crossings and do sewer line repair for mostly eighty-nine. There's a couple other places in the town, but it's the project our engineers submitted for us. So I'm going to do the exhibit four resolution first. This is a resolution of the city of McKee accepting the grant, approving the grant assistance agreement, authorizing the amendment of city of McKee's annual budget and authorizing our representative to sign all related documents, whereas the Kentucky General Assembly has appropriated funds for infrastructure projects in House bill one of the twenty twenty-four regular session and House joint resolution thirty of the twenty twenty-five regular session of the Kentucky General Assembly. Whereas the city of McKee has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements in the grantee's utility system, whereas the grantee desires the funding from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for the purpose of acquisition of the construction of the project. Whereas in order to obtain a grant foil project and administered by the authority, the grantee is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore, be resolved by the governing body, the city of McKee, as follows. Section one, the grantee hereby accepts the grant award and approves the agreement between the grantee and the authority to provide necessary funds to the grantee foil project. Section two, that the mayor and any successor entitled is hereby designated to be the grantee's authorized official for this project and is hereby directed and empowered by the grantee to execute the agreement, related documents and agreements to otherwise act on behalf of the grantee to effect such grant award to engage a qualified and to engage a qualified project administrator. That the grantee hereby agrees to, agrees and commits to include by amendment to its annual budget and audit process the receipts and expenditures of funds subject to the agreement of two, including the date of the project flows out. Section four, that this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided.
We have a resolution on the floor. Is there a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept.
Motion by Dillon.
I'll second.
Second by Rich.
Is that a water meeting?
No, it's to replace sewer.
All in favor of the resolution, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second resolution is an authorizing resolution of the city of McKee for filing of a funding application and appointing appropriate local government officials and successors entitled as official project representative of the Kentucky Water and wastewater assistance for troubled or economically restrained systems, also known as Kentucky Waters Program Project, whereas city of McKee proposes to complete a capital project as identified in the Water Resource Information System as S X two one one zero nine zero zero one or a non-capital project that will not require a W R I S number. And this is for the city of McKee and norces said project. And whereas under the terms of amendments to KRS twenty-two a, the Kentucky Water Program was established to provide for funding application and evaluation process for eligible public water and wastewater systems to seek funds from the General Assembly. And whereas the purposes proposed for either capital or non-capital expenses by the city of McKee within the Jackson County area are considered eligible for such funding. Now therefore, be resolved by the city of McKee that the mayor and successors entitled are hereby authorized to execute and submit an application through the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority with such assurances and required supporting data as is necessary to obtain funding assistance for the Kentucky Water Program for the proposed capital or non-capital project and are hereby authorized as city of McKee's official project representative to carry out negotiations or administer the funding assistance the applicant may obtain for the Kentucky Water Program.
Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
I make a motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have with us Duncan Cox, our CTA from Edmondson Cox, and he has our latest audit to present.
I'll move up closer to the middle so maybe you can hear me. The, behind the first page is a loose letter. I just want to touch on that real quick. Well, this is some required communication about the audit. If we'd had any difficulties doing the audit, disagreements with management or major issues like that, we would point this out in this letter. Have to say there's nothing in here that we need to be concerned about. We didn't have any problems other than just getting it done. This is the audit of the financial statements for the year in the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And I'll, I'll put them in a lot of detail, but I'll go with as much detail as you want. We have to answer all the questions. First page behind the table of contents is the independent auditor's report. This is, this is what you actually hired us to do, is to do our opinion on these financial statements that were presented. And I'll just read that second paragraph. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities in each major fund of the city of McKee, Kentucky, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and the changes in financial position and cash flows for the year then ended in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So I could call it a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. There's some other information in the report. A lot of, a lot of information they have to put in the opinion. That's the highlight, our opinion is unmodified, a clean opinion. Over page four, the statement of net position or a balance sheet in a traditional company is probably never written, governmental activities, the general fund and the business type activities to water and sewer. Presents the major assets and liabilities at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Next page is a statement of activities or an income statement for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We've broken down by the governmental activities and the business type activities. We also are required over page six and seven to present the, what's called fund financial statements. It used to be that governments were accounted for using fund accountants. Several years ago, they said that you have to present a governor-wide financial statement in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. But you still have to present the fund financial statements as well. And that's what page six, seven, eight and nine are presenting on the general fund. And then you have to reconcile that to the government-wide statements. And the differences are, on the fund financial statements, we don't record fixed assets and you don't record capital expenditures and numbers payable, whereas on the government-wide GAAP basis financial statement you do. And that reconciliation on page seven is showing the difference between the two. Page eight is the fund income statement. And again, page nine is reconciliation of that statement back to the government-wide statement about activities. We also present on page ten, the proprietary fund or the water and sewer fund, a balance sheet, income statement and statement of cash flows, over page twelve. And then starting on page thirteen are the notes to the financial statements. A lot of information presented about how the items on the financial statements are accounted for. Go into detail on some of those, as you can see. Like on page seventeen, breakdown deposits and accounts receivable. Page eighteen is the capital assets of the government fund and the water and sewer fund. Show the balance at the beginning of the year, any additions, retirements, the balance at the end of the year. Note seven, same thing for long-term debt. Present the balance at the beginning of the year, activity, and then the balance at the end of the year. Some other information in the notes that's our required disclosure. On page twenty-two is the budget comparison schedule that's required to be presented comparing the budget, the budget to actual results for the general fund. Page twenty-three and twenty-four is, it's called a gavel book audit report on governmental auditing. You have to present and give an opinion on compliance of laws and regulations. And that's what that is. The last page are two findings that we do have in relation to the audit. The first one has to do with segregation of duties. Small government organization, it's impossible to have a perfect segregation of duties where you have one or two people in the office doing everything. So we're pointing that out that that is a finder. And then the second has to do with the accounting system, the fact that you don't actually have a detailed general ledger system. That makes it more difficult to pull everything together in the form of a financial statement. And it creates an opportunity where you couldn't miss something. Whereas if you had a detailed general ledger, then you could balance it and just be easier to keep track of. We had those same findings last audit. I know I threw that in a hurry, but I don't want to take up more time than you want to spend on it, but we happy to answer any questions.
Is there anything that we can do to prevent the lapse in the future?
Well, if we, if the information was more readily available in the form of the general ledger, it'd be a whole lot easier to pull everything together. The way we work with spreadsheets, we have to combine a lot of different things and pull it together. And that's just, it takes longer and it's more difficult. And this has been an unusual year for us. We've been very busy. No excuse, but that's, it is what it is.
And I think we are looking into the accounting system for our legal agencies. So hopefully that's something we can implement soon. Any questions for Mr. Cox? From the council or our guests? Hearing none? Good. You're welcome to stay or...
Do we need to make a motion to, does that need to be approved or adopted or anything?
I think we just accept it, don't we?
Yeah. So I'll just ask for a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Make a motion to accept audit as presented.
I'll say it. Second by Dillon. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I'll get out of your way and I'll, I hope you have to say from me too, but...
There's no need, I don't think. We sure appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Let's continue the meeting without the bird to our guests here. Who's, who's the leader or is, are there four leaders?
We'll defer to Craig.
Four different topics here.
All are leaders. What's on that? We're back in and we're presenting to you guys, we've been partnered up and a destination probably downtown McKee for visitors and for... How to do it here? This is just a, uh, put together, this just for visionary purposes. Mr. Hobbs had, had the engineer to look at that piece of property there, that little section behind the wall. And he said, I tried to print that, but I'm trying to look at it.
He, he's specifically said that we would need to lay a thirty-six inch CMP pipe laid at a one percent slope minimum with concrete head walls on each end. It measures about a hundred feet long. You also need to cut in ditches to direct the runoff to the inlet end along the southern hillside.
You can give a cost estimate on that?
Uh, no, but I just Googled the pipe and the pipe itself, not counting your concrete walls, your labored, your digging, is going to be anywhere between five thousand and eight thousand dollars.
Just for the pipe?
Just for the pipe. So I didn't, I didn't dive any further into that because I clutched my pearls a little bit at that. So I, I did sort of think of maybe an alternative. There's a little triangle over here that like it's flat already and it's not going to cost us anything to put stuff over there.
Is that owned by the city of Kiwanis though?
We, so the, like the creek separates, we own this side of the creek.
This side of the creek?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trying to think of it.
Pass these out. This one, very...
Yeah, okay, yeah. Trying to think of it, yeah, he's... My thoughts were, of course, you know, you don't argue with an engineer. A thirty-six inch tile, that's a big, that's a big tile. But overkill is always the best, I'm sure. So if we were to continue with that, we'd have to come up with funding to make that happen, but...
Yeah.
That's not to say that we can't tour other areas as well.
Yeah, I mean, that one, it like, it's already flat. Um, the inmates keep it mowed for us. So I mean, as long as you don't infringe upon the Kiwanis Club and as long as we can still have our NOS rural park sign, I mean, as long as the council's on board with it, like, because we don't have ten to fifteen thousand dollars to spend to fix that behind this part, part was sort of my theory.
Yeah. Of course, the program that we're working through, we've got a little bit of funding, but a lot of that goes toward the actual, you know, the, the bureau and the sculpture part of it and the ministry side of it and all of it, you know. And knowingly going forward, we knew we were going to have to generate more funds. So part of the process. You guys got anything?
Is this two quotes, the eight thousand one hundred twenty-four and then five thousand two hundred thirty?
It's two different quotes for the same pipe. I, I Googled that pipe and it was two different websites that came up and one was five thousand and one was eight thousand.
Was, was that to install with it?
No, that's literally the cost of the material, just the pipe. That's not including anything else. That's not including your head walls. Somebody to dig it out, dig the ditches, not installation, none of that. Literally just the pipe.
Do you guys have a contract with a pipe company through your roads department?
Not for culverts like that, because we don't have culverts on city streets.
Okay. I know when I worked with the Flatland Falls project, they had a contract with a place in London and we were able to get contract rights and get...
We did not.
I guess our thoughts on this committee is, and I'm speaking for some of them, that they really want to use the site if we can raise the funds. We've got this mural project where the money has to be spent, some in October and the second grant was November. So we've got to proceed with something pretty quick. And if nothing else, at least maybe put the mural next to the existing mural so that we don't lose that money. So we're talking ten thousand dollars there worth of mural project. So I actually got reduced to seven thousand five hundred dollars worth of mural project.
Is this a mural you're talking about?
Uh, well, you see the existing mural there? It would probably, yeah, probably go right next to that. This is, yeah, yeah, right, yeah. Not there, not the big long one, just because we don't have the funds for the big long one at this time. So my understanding, AI generated this?
Yeah, this was just an AI generation, just for visionary, just for appetizers, you know.
Yeah, so this is not... This is not our plan, but it's, you know, what, AI generated?
Yeah.
We do have a graphic artist that's, uh, our committees come together and brainstormed all the ideas and they've got a preliminary sketch that they're going to present at our next meeting to, to finalize what we want on the mural. And the mural was sized for basically the same size as that one, but next to it.
This one?
Yeah. But it'd be right, right next to it. And then as far as the sculpture part, I guess we've got to look at these other sites and then make a decision on that. But if we can generate the funds to fix this up, and I can tell now with that kind of price curve, plus, does the city have any equipment to do any excavating to dig that trench?
No, we contract all of that out.
Okay. So you don't have any equipment to help out there then?
No.
You no longer have a backhoe?
They, uh...
Contact, but...
We have a boat.
I know this is just AI generated, but I know my wife did her nurse practitioner residency with Gloria and these parking spots are full during the day, especially if there's, if there's courts or I mean, any, any kind of design that would allow us to retain all the parking spots. Because I mean, having all this artwork and mural is nice, but if there's nowhere to park and get out and look at it, it kind of...
Well, I think if you envisioned that behind the wall, AI probably didn't understand. We've got the wall and behind the wall.
Okay, so you wanted this, where the parking lot is.
Yeah, and where the big retaining wall is. We discussed with somebody to maybe bring that wall down to table height and then you put a concrete tabletop on it. You can see over top of it, you still have that parking area there and still have that little area behind it.
But the area that Danielle's talking about there over here, I think you would be, you would have more freedom in the...
Well, after this meeting, we'll take a look at it and take it back to our committee, which is...
Because I mean, there's nothing restricting it. You can see it, you know, from four twenty-one, just like this one. It's under, a little under the bank, but people could park here or the veterans park and walk over and you would have...
For the sculpture portion of it?
Right.
I don't know for a mural, you'd want a mural there with long poles because it'd cover up a lot of other good stuff going on there, the ball fields, the...
You could put the mural against the roadside, so you see it from the park.
Back of the mural facing four twenty-one. So we're trying to beautify it.
The mural and the architect and the sculpture go together.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that was the absence, boy.
Well, if you can, if you can just, if you can just kind of get it in a, a picture without looking at this, our intent, if it, if it completely come together, would be that we would not affect any of the parking down there. The parking would all stay the same. Practically everything that we envisioned is actually behind that wall. And yes, you know, pipe costs way too much, but if there was some kind of funding that would come together, that, that area that, that, that we're looking at right now, it would definitely need some enhancement and would help the, the city, the county, the, the park that is there now. It's definitely less than a feeling.
Yeah.
I guess that's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
And I'm all for it if you can come up with the funding. That's the trick.
The idea of it too was to have it with in walkable distance of downtown. It's all about bringing people in, it's about bringing locals in, bringing visitors in. They come to the park to check it out and then they find the businesses spend money while they're in the heat. So that's a big, that's a big part of that too.
Could we get the mural at least, oh, if we can't get the rest of it, we've had six times, we get that funding together. Could we get the mural part established where that, the Sparks Park or that park location is, next to the current one? And we can move forward on looking at this other location, because it'd be nice to have kind of spots throughout McKee where people can kind of walk and, and be anchored in the area. But as soon as we have funding now for a mural and a designer, if we could establish just that part of the sculpture, the sculpture part of this location. And so just reiterating, we'll be putting a new mural next to the current existing one. So it would just be extending...
Just being aligned with the existing.
Yeah, there's room to not affect any of the sewer mural there. And that was kind of our idea because of the time constraint on money that we received for the grant for the mural.
And the whole vision of bringing art into Jackson County is not just downtown McKee. It may be something at the Welcome Center. There's a little park downtown, Sand Gap, where there's some veterans honored, you know, to have something maybe in that. So as you drive through the county, maybe something at Flatland. And, um, there's an event center coming up there, maybe have a sculpture trail around it. Just something to bring art to the whole community. So when, when visitors and residents drive by, you know, they can see that this community, uh...
Cares about it.
Yeah, cares about it, wants to beautify it and wants to honor our creatives and, and show what they can do, because we do have some very creative people in this, this community.
And the mural and the pieces will have to be sort of juried in so that we don't have some city that shows up. It, it'll be, needs to be something that, you know, portrays our culture and, you know, something that's for everybody and something that's a, it's an area that's safe, that feels safe, lit and all that, all the love that'll attract people coming. something that's a, it's an area that's safe, that feels safe, lit and all that, all the love that'll, that'll attract people coming in.
And I guess to keep us moving forward so we don't lose the current grants that we have, I guess, permission tonight to go ahead with the mural, whether it's next to the existing mural or we'll look at this, if that's possible to have your blessing on, on both sites that we can look at it, whatever we can fund. If you guys can contribute anything, it's great, if you can't, we'll work the issue. So I think that's what we're asking for tonight, is your blessing on, on really, now there's just a second possibility, let's have your blessing on both sites tonight.
I would also, like, before there would be any voting about a mural or sculpture or anything, um, for you all to discuss, if something, like, the mural goes up and you all have the funding or whoever's paying for that, and then later if we get to the sculptures. Once those are up, who is responsible for the upkeep? And then also, if those are damaged, um, what are we looking at in terms of, of liability? Is that something that the city is going to pursue? Is that something that the city is going to fix if, you know, whether it's from a, a person, you know, unfortunately damaging it or weather, what have you, uh, wear and tear? I think that is something that you all need to discuss and consider how that will, what that will look like moving forward.
Great question.
Rodney.
Rodney, if you wanna mention what the foundation is that?
The maintenance fund?
Well, the, the, the community foundation has, has already established a arts and cultural fund that, uh, that has within its guidelines to, to do, uh, maintenance and upkeep, uh, and, and of course, any, anybody, and that, that fund is, is already established with, and, and presently holds six thousand dollars. Uh, it is, uh, the thought process, eh, eh, moving forward, first of all, until this project is complete, all of that fund is spendable. But, but if we got the project completed, that, that fund would be split into spendable and, and, and endowed at a percentage, maybe fifty-fifty. And, and of course, the endowed amount would be forever spendable from the interest of it to, to, uh, to provide maintenance and upkeep. Now, I, I don't know that I can address the liability part, uh, you know, if, if somebody stumbles over the yellow line under the stoplight down there, you know, what happens? Uh, I, I can't address the liability at all, but, but maintenance and upkeep, the, the community foundation has, has agreed to maintain this fund moving forward, that, that could do that.
Well, there's not much liability if you're just gonna put a mural next to the other mural, am I right?
Well, yes, but, but the mural is, is just part of the.
That's not the whole thing.
No, it's not the whole thing, but right now they're only asking for you to put that mural up.
Yeah, the, the point, the, the liability point though is if somebody goes and like chops that mural down and it falls on a car, like, is the city gonna have to pick up the tab on that? Or if somebody vandalizes it, is the city going to have to pay to clean that up? That's, that's the liability.
If you have a stolen, and part of it comes off.
How, how does that process happen now for all the other?
I mean, we ensure our own stuff, but like, that, like, we're gonna have. For property, that we're probably gonna have to add that onto our property because it's our property liability. But if somebody comes over and beats down one of the sculptures or vandalizes the mural, are we responsible for fixing that?
Sounds like there needs to be something like a memorandum of understanding or you all to put together something like that, though.
Isn't that what, Rodney, isn't that what you just said? That there's already an established fund, was it?
There is an established fund that will do maintenance and upkeep. I, I, I exempted out liability, I don't, I don't know that I even understand the term. Uh, I, I think, I think the term means if, if the mural falls on a car, who pays for the car? That's what I heard.
Yes.
Or somebody falls in your parking lot now, who pays?
Or if the mural just falls, who pays to put it back up?
Right.
I think we're saying we'll put it back up, but.
That spot is already a city park, it's the Sparks Park.
Yeah, so it's already should fall into city liability policy, right? You should insure all your land up there.
The, the, that, the it falling is not so much the question, but like, like I said, if somebody vandalizes it, is the city then responsible for fixing it? Or if somebody steals a sculpture or chainsaws a sculpture in half? It, that's, that's what we would need a memorandum of understanding for, is if you all are gonna fix it with your maintenance fund or if you expect the city to fix it.
Okay, so we just need to make sure we get in writing that we will take care of vandalize, vandalize.
Yeah.
Potential vandal.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, thank you.
That's an easy, that's an easy contract, but it's a contract between, between.
Well, I think we have a stable of sponsors.
The basis is we're in a work group in our possession.
I, I think we, I mean, you, you, you read some memorandums of agreements before we, at the beginning of the meeting. We, we have an attorney that can, that can draw one up and, and, uh, and we'll go from there.
I think that would be, that would be great, and then like maybe a, a more realistic, uh, visualization of what you were trying to do would, would help further your project.
So if we wait another month, is that gonna mess your money up?
It's gonna hurt, but we'll do the best we can, I've, knowing, knowing that we have a potential site and we can work on memorandum agreement. We've already got a, uh, a rough idea of what's gonna be on the mural that a graphic artist has put together in graphic form. And we can proceed with the request for quote from the muralists. Um, if you, if you guys are confident that, you know, at least the mural part can proceed, uh, you know, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on quoting, you know, having muralists do a lot of work and I get them quotes if, if you don't think it's, you know, something you're interested in. So, uh, I guess we need to get a pretty good feel that you guys want us to move forward and, and, uh, proceed, but we, you know, we don't wanna lose the mural money cause we, we are, we're talking October's coming pretty quick.
Yeah.
And they've gotta fit that in their schedule too and paint it for bad weather and everything. And we gotta close the other grant down to end of October.
I, I would be all for anything that makes that place less of an eyesore, but we would kinda, I feel like we as a whole would need something that somewhat generally resembles what the intent of the project is gonna be. Cause this, I mean, if, if you're not gonna take any parking spots.
No, that.
This, you know, this picture is nowhere in the same ballpark to me, what you're trying to explain to us.
You take a picture of it, but to tell AI you gotta do it behind the wall doesn't work.
A hand, a hand drawn drawing would effectively.
Simple sketch.
Put forth what you're trying to explain, you know.
So there's a retaining wall at the back of that lot.
Right.
The way, does the city own behind that retaining wall?
That's what they want, is behind the retaining wall, but that's why I would like, that's why we're gonna have to, somebody's gonna have to pay a lot of money to reroute the water flow because there's like a runoff, creek runoff that goes right through the middle of the back half of that.
Yeah, that, that would, when they dug that, it turned into a huge fiasco.
Right. Now, yeah. Now, you know, if you got into digging on that, there's an old house up on that bank.
Yeah, and then it will fall down.
Yeah, that would be.
We're not touching that bank at all, that's, that's all you guys.
You're not gonna take any of the blocks.
You guys are gonna put retaining walls and, and rock and everything there, so we're not touching that. So, it's just the flat part behind that needs to be drained, cause right now you got like.
How big is it, Rodney, behind that retaining wall?
The whole lot is only about an acre.
The whole lot?
From road to end.
And that includes parking, so it'd be less than a, less than a half acre, a proper quarter.
It's about a sixty foot by seventy foot kind of an angle behind that wall there.
There, there, I, I don't know how big it is, but I've been there and looked at it and walked over it. It is big enough to do what, what we want to do.
Right.
Okay? And, and I understand that's not a good picture, what, what I just said is not a good picture. Uh, but there is enough, there is enough property behind there that, that is already excavated.
Right.
Uh.
In, in between that lot and that.
In between that wall and, and the high wall.
Right.
Yeah, I, I've got a drawing that I've scribbled myself, I didn't bring it because of obvious reasons, it's a scribbling, but behind that, I, I drew a small retaining wall that's waist-high, all the way around there, and then with those murals behind that would be a backdrop for that. And, and the parking wouldn't, wouldn't be touched, it, it would be just like it is now.
So we need a stronger visual moving forward and we need to get commitment on a memorandum for liability to secure it.
Memorandum, who's gonna maintain the sculptures and the mural.
Maintenance, we have the.
The MOU in general, anybody that draws one up is gonna hit all the bases, so.
And, uh, your, your engineer that was down there, I forget what his name was.
Rodney.
Uh.
progress.
He, he indicated that, that the retaining wall that is there is, is probably about a hundred percent overdone right now. You know, you could, you, you could, uh, achieve the same benefit with about half as much wall as you've got there right now.
I don't remember where they put that wall.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole, that's a whole other story.
Yeah, but, and I don't know, I don't know where the wall come from, but it's, 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 it's twice as much as you need, height-wise.
Pretty good size, eh?
It's twice as much as you need, okay? So, and, and that's, that's, that is verified by your, what your engineer said.
Yeah, that's kinda, I mean, you can see on Google Earth what that wall is and where the wall is now, I mean, there's, there's just a kinda little sliver behind it, but.
Yeah, on your way back home tonight, stop by and take a look behind that.
Oh, I've, I've been behind it, but you know, when you start digging all that, when you start digging all that mud out, you know, the bank is, you know, we've, we've had lots of problems with people cleaning ditches and banks slipping, so.
Yeah, and, and I, we're not gonna touch any of the banks, I think the big thing is, is that right now, all the drainage is going through a little pipe like this on the surface and then it's washing down the creek and washing, actually washing the whole creek bank out. So it's, it's, you know, whatever thing we would do would definitely improve the, the situation that you have there right now.
Especially visually.
Yeah.
Cause it's ugly, so I just think.
Well, I think structurally too, if you go look at it, where that pipe, where that pipe is draining in the ditch, it's washing a lot of that.
Fire hydrants been missing for, what, ten years? Number two.
Am I wrong?
I'd say so, I don't know.
Originally, uh, designed to be a park and to.
They, they said they didn't care.
They gave that to the city, the Sparks family gave that to the city?
I think the, the only thing they wanted was it to be in their memory.
Yes, yes, their name.
Well, that's, that's the other part of that too, is, you know, we'll have ample signage and, you know, on the, where you, where you'd step into it, you'd have the information about the park and all that, you know.
Sparks Park, it's just Sparks Excitement.
Yeah.
Sparks Parks.
Sparks Excitement.
Sculpture Park.
So if we can do phase one for the mural pending that memorandum on liability.
We need to make a.
I think we would have to actually have something to approve is the big thing, you know, until, until we have something to approve, it's hard to approve it, so. We, we look forward to.
We were kinda in that same position waiting on approval before we got moved in fairly.
So I, I'm understanding that a memorandum of agreement is what we need to have at the next meeting?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd work with Danielle and Brittany.
And, and a, and a relative. And a relatively close rendition of what it's gonna look like would be
Not visual, yes.
Very helpful for your project. Cause to have a visual rendition of what it's not gonna look like doesn't garner a lot of support.
Well, I think that'll give me an idea of the kinds of things we're trying to treat throughout the county.
Yeah, that's just for visionary there, that's not.
We want murals and we want sculptures and, and, yeah, those are not the sculptures that will be there, cause they will be very invited, the artists.
Agreement, if we wanna do this, we just have to protect the city.
Absolutely.
Okay, can we speak about liability that was brought up? I mean, uh, if there is li, if, if it's, if it's li, if the liability is covered by somebody else other than the city, how, how do you go for it?
If somebody falls in your parking lot today, are you covered? I mean, would that be any difference in two ninety park or somebody walking into city hall? I guess, I'm assuming you guys have coverage on all your properties.
Yes, I'll be your good property.
But when the fair comes, the fair has their own insurance for their own objects that, you know, if the Ferris wheel falls on somebody, it's the Ferris wheel people, not the city. You know, the city is responsible for what they brought to the table, not what anyone else brought to the table.
Okay, so we'd like to provide that to creative communities, we'll take responsibility for the sculptures that are established.
The maintenance upkeep, what, I mean, whatever, peo- people that do that know how to do it, so, I don't.
But they need to walk away with you with a firm belief of what you just said, that we were probably all in agreement that we want that, right? In order for you to be able to do what you need to do, am I right?
Yes.
Yes, because we're spending money on stuff now that we need to be spending money on and, and if this isn't gonna work, then we need to go to Plan C. So.
Yeah, we didn't wanna hire a designer and an architect and all that, you know, that's the kinda money that we don't have on the project, we want the money to go to the project.
I'd love to see that.
I would too.
I would too.
So, yeah, Six, wanna see it happen? Y'all wanna see it happen?
Could be a.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody's.
Not many, yes.
Okay, so, so explaining in what we need to bring to you.
A memorandum of understanding that basically lays out the liability of what's going on there. Uh, more specific, exactly what is intended to be done, exactly what you're gonna do. My opinion states that, uh, the, whoever's there reporting to this agreement is gonna take care of the funding of this, that we're not relying on the city for.
Right.
Funding and, um, is there anything else?
Just say a, a reasonably flexible proposal of what we wanna, you know, what you all wanna build. Cause I mean, we can approve within reason, flexibility built into, you know, plus or minus, but we have to have a starting point to plus or minus to approve.
Okay. I think we're clear.
Any other comments? The charge.
And even a, uh, a drawing, a hand drawing, a visual that we can see, do you know what I'm saying? Like your, your scribble that you were talking about. And not this beautiful.
Well, we want it to be this beautiful, but behind the other wall.
Yeah.
And we don't, we don't wanna hire an architect to do that, because what we're saying is we want something pretty, you know?
No, but you could do a, a pencil drawing and just make copies and then, so we get that, this is not what you're gonna make. Like, this is not what.
That's just a visual rendition.
What we're saying, but if they approve that and then you do that, like, that's, that's what they're saying, like, if it looks like that and they approve it, then there's nothing that would stop you from going and doing that.
You understand this is a multi-year project and it's gonna change depending on the sculptures that get involved? So, we won't know exactly what these sculptures will be.
No, but we're just saying, well.
It'll be changed out. It's gonna be changed out.
They're similar to that.
Most sculpture parks, the pieces change every two years.
Yeah, all that and the proposal would...
Actually a full proposal.
Yeah, just a, you know, it's, I mean, if I had to approve something, it's absolutely, yeah.
Just call AI, what is it?
When you say AI?
We'll read this one.
It's called AI, which is artificial intelligence, a computer generated this. You tell a computer...
Something that I am not familiar with.
You, you plug a photo in a computer and say, hey, make this look pretty. We want a mural that has country, you know, because we want mountains and something reflects Jackson County. And then we tell it to put some sculptures in and it puts sculptures in. So it's something you can do on your own with a computer versus hiring an architect that would charge you thousands of dollars to do something.
Right.
We're, we're well before the architectural phase, but I think we're well within the hand drawn sketch phase.
Rodney, did you have something else?
I was going to say, if at the next meeting you're just approving the mural, then I would think that a proposal that was just showing the mural. Since it may change depending on what can be done, I think it's, it's important that you all approve just the one aspect that we're focusing on of what we anticipate that that will look like. So I don't even think that their next proposal to you or even the memorandum has to include the sculptures if we're not there yet because you're looking at the other place. I mean, if you're there, you're there, but if not, I do think it's important that when looking back at minutes and things of that nature, that we're looking at what are we voting on at the next meeting? And just having a rendition of that and a proposal for that aspect.
Okay, anything else? Is anybody interested in a sidewalk with a splash pad? I think that's in the works, like in...
Are we, are we gonna, are we gonna fix the sidewalk?
Oh, a handrail, that's what.
Are we gonna fix the sidewalk in front of the old fire station while we're fixing sidewalks?
Stay with the old city hall. Do we do that or does that go in the hall?
We, we made the mess, so I feel like we should be obligated to fix it.
I should fix that at the same time.
Because that was, uh, the city, that was a water leak that was...
Well, I'm here to check this on my, if we can, but I know they've been like...
I don't, I don't know a lot, but...
Can I leak a little bit back?
Okay, anything else before we adjourn?
The, uh, are we, are we anywhere on our lease with the fire department building?
I sent it back and I sent it to Kyle and I sent it to you and somebody is supposed to get it to Frank. For him to look it over.
So that's where it is.
So we, is there any way you could, any way you could get that to Frank and... I think our, our new fire truck is getting some repairs made before it gets shipped and we're, we got a price from a shipping company in New Jersey and, uh, Alan's Recker Service out of Manchester that does a lot of work for us here locally is also gonna give us a price, see if we can't get a little better price locally for somebody that can put it on a lowboy and bring it here. Got everything I can think of on that. And our snow pile, I tried to bring it to Richmond to the company and my truck is not compatible with it, so it's gonna have to get put on a trailer. I spoke with the phone company and they said they'd be glad to bring their trailer truck down and send it on a trailer whenever we needed to, just give them a call.
Okay, very good. Anything else from this? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vicki, second by...
Oh, Mickey.
Kathy, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Here, it's gonna be our adjourn.